Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for June eighth, two thousand and twenty. This is a special meeting. Uh, this is Select Board Chair Marie Angelidis. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipating on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond. Uh, Richard Foster.
Yes.
Mark Gold.
Yes.
Tom Lakusha.
Yes.
Mark Strange.
Yes.
Uh, Lynn Simmons.
Yes.
Um, Paul Pasturic, is he here?
Yes.
Uh, Debbie House.
Yeah.
And anticipated speakers, uh, we have applicants from the Meeting House. Are you, uh, on the line?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Boards being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Therefore, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Um, let's see. Uh, we will all roll votes will be by roll call. And if you wish to speak, uh, please let me know. I will be, uh, calling your name, uh, when you can participate. So, uh, do you have any announcements today, Lynn?
I do not.
Okay, other than, uh, at seven o'clock tonight, uh, if you will be connecting, uh, you have to go back on and re-link in. We will be having a public forum on the warrant. Alright, so let's go on down, um, to the first item. And, uh, Lynn, you want to talk about outdoor restaurant dining?
Yes, so, uh, as a result of Governor Baker's phase two reopening, um, restaurants are allowed to offer outdoor, uh, dining, table service, outdoor dining, beginning, um, today, actually. Uh, the order was pretty sweeping and it gave authority for the process to allow outdoor dining to select boards. Uh, in talking with town council, he's confirmed this for me. What I've seen other communities do is select boards, uh, grant authority to the town manager to develop the process and work with the relevant department heads to make sure that restaurants can open back up in a safe and streamlined manner. So if you don't bog them down with, uh, a ton of permitting and different steps to take with our various boards. Um, and so what I would be proposing to you tonight is that you grant me that authority and that I would work with the health department, the fire department, the building department, and, um, any relevant liquor licensing that would need to happen would then come in front of you if there needed to be a modification to, uh, their extension of premise outside, um, their patio. Um, I am trying not to overthink this process. I've seen what other communities are doing that have larger restaurant base. And I, well, those are really great, um, plans they have in place. I, I think it would be overthinking it here for us at this time. Um, I'm also trying to be sensitive to the timeliness of this, both for myself, for the departments, and for the businesses. There are quite a few that already have outdoor dining. So i- assuming that they are not, um, expanding their area at all, they would be allowed to use what they already have permitted. Um, but anybody that would be expanding over and above something they don't already have permitted, that's where this authority that I'm asking that you grant me, I would then work with them, um, and the departments to make sure they were doing it in a safe manner. And also, uh, this extension is temporary through November first, based on the governor's order. So this would not carry over to next summer at all.
Okay, Richard Foster, do you have any questions for Lynn?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. I'd like to place a motion that we grant her the authority to execute, uh, what she has just displayed to the public.
Okay, uh, I'll pause on a second so I can see if anyone else has questions. Um, Mark Gold, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a, a, a couple of questions. I guess, Lynn, uh, we have pretty diverse types of restaurants. Everything from the, you know, I mean, the Meeting House is represented here, but we have, you know, Max Burgers that's got outdoor dining. Then we have places like, like, um, Grapevine, which has essentially no outdoor space other than the parking lot. How are we gonna, oh, how do you envision painting the safety of parking lots and areas like that? Or even at the Long Meadow shops and, and parking lots? Are we gonna try to require that the, the outdoor service be contiguous with the restaurant itself? Or is this kind of any, anything within your general premises? Or, you know, how do, how do, how do you see this? I mean, since the Meeting House is here, you know, could they set up a tent on the side of the People's Bank? You know, drive-through, the very west side of that building?
Um, I guess it's, it's any or all of that or none of that. Uh, and that's, I guess, the piece where I'm trying to not overthink it yet. We don't actually have anything in front of us for a business that doesn't already have some sort of outdoor dining. So I'm trying not to spend a ton of time on the what-ifs yet until we're actually presented with a plan that we have to then spend the time evaluating. Uh, those are all really great points, Mark, and they all will merit, uh, serious consideration if and when we're presented that plan. There are quite a few, um, restaurants, like I said, that already have outdoor dining. We've also communicated to every single food service establishment about this new, uh, modification and, uh, asked that they reach out to Paul Healy with their intent to open up or offer outdoor dining. So far, we've only heard from the Meeting House and Long Meadow Country Club. Uh, we did have a conver- uh, Fire Chief had a conversation with Steve Walker about, uh, pasto and Max's. I do expect additional plans to come from them to expand their outdoor area. They already are permitted for some outdoor space. Uh, but this would be over and above what they already have. We just haven't seen those plans yet. And, um, Long Meadow Country Club already has an outdoor patio that's approved. They haven't presented anything that's looking to go over and above that. And then the Meeting House tonight, when you, um, hear from them later on in the agenda, you'll also see that that is for exactly what they, um, received permission from the planning board last year to, um, to use as an outdoor space. So what you mentioned, I think, does merit further consideration. I'm just trying not to spend a lot of time and get bogged down in considering all the what-ifs until we have something in front of us just based on how, um, how quickly this is all moving and there's other competing factors for my time and the department's time right now.
Can I just, just a big follow-up, Marie, if I could, the, it, does that-
Hold, hold on one, hold on one minute, Mark. Uh, Marie, I'd request a second on the motion before we have discussion.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second motion.
Tom Lakusha seconded. Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead with your question, Mark.
Yeah, just a, so, so this is all based on applications as opposed to a, a sweeping policy or some system within the town that says the following is allowed, the following is not allowed? We're gonna do this on a case-by-case basis, based on plans or, or proposals submitted to you by each of the ten restaurants in town? Or twelve, or however many we have?
Um, I, I, if I understand your question correctly, um, so in the pre-COVID world, there were multiple layers to what a restaurant would need to do to get outdoor seating permitted, including planning board, uh, possibly zoning board, depending on the outcome, and, um, the select board for the liquor license, and then the Board of Health. What the governor's order did was streamline that and kind of condense it all into select board approval. So what other communities have done, and this is what I'm asking you to do, you, we can certainly do it a different way if you would like to, um, is recognizing the timeliness of these applications. They have, other communities have granted the authority to the town manager or town administrator to work with the relevant departments to make sure that the plans that the restaurant presents are safe and have taken all of the department concerns into consideration. And then the authority would be vested in the town manager to approve those. Um, we could leave the approval with the select board. It will just require likely a forty-eight hour waiting period between when the, uh, the restaurant submits something to when the board can hold a meeting. And then in between posting that meeting, we would bet their plans that they have submitted.
Any other questions, Mark?
No, I, I just, I still not, I, I was under the, it would be a, a broad declaration of, here's what's allowable, here's what's not allowable, go to it. What you're saying is it's not that at all. It's a one-by-one, restaurants must, here's what we'd like to apply for, and all we've done is, is streamline the application and approval process.
Yes. Okay, Tom Lakusha, do you have any questions?
Yes, um, my only, it's more of a comment, Lynn, just that as you continue to move forward on this, I can understand folks want to get to open up outdoor events. Um, but these venues, I guess, part of it would be that we should have a consistent size. You know, that whatever the largest outdoor venue is at this point, and I'm not sure if it's Max Burger or what, but that the square footage of that size should be, um, similar to any temporary approvals. You know, that we shouldn't give people, you know, I'm sure you wouldn't, but, you know, we don't want them setting up a big, you know, uh, Oktoberfest tent, you know, in one of the parking lots or something, uh, even though the, uh, they may get approval from the, uh, the owner of the, the, uh, plaza. I think we should keep it consistent to what other folks have had. Um, and, you know, and I think it's, it's something that we, we need to have. Uh, you know, I know that even we cover the golf course in Frank Colia. Uh, and I would imagine they would be interested in doing something like this also for golfers. So, um, yeah, I, I think this is a good proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Strange?
Yeah, uh, so we're dealing with this in Agua, and it really is, there's really no, no guidance. You know, it's, it's, um, it's largely discretionary and dependent on each individual location. The biggest concerns are, um, safety of the temporary facility in terms of big storms or winds, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and then parking, making sure there's, there remains enough parking. Um, but, you know, I, I know Lynn's gonna do a great job, so she's, she's, that, I'm totally fine with her making this.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any questions, Lynn, so, uh, why not go-
Can I just ask a follow-up question to what Tom had said? Um, so I guess if you could, if I could maybe ask the whole board what your feelings are with regarding tents. We don't have a concrete, um, proposal right now from any establishment to add a tent, but I do, uh, anticipate we may get one from the shops. Uh, they may be looking to do one large tent or maybe two medium-sized tents for the businesses. Because one thing that, um, I've been seeing is the outdoor dining requires six feet of spacing between tables. And that then needs them to have a larger area to spread out in. And if that's the case and they want to do a tent, I, I'd guess I would like some guidance from you. Either you're completely opposed to tents or you would like to retain the authority to review the ones that do have tent proposals.
Well, um, I believe that tents are going to be inevitable because that's where most people are gonna have to go for a tent. And I think it's difficult to, uh, measure size because if you say we have to be equal, um, there's a lot of, I mean, whether we talk at the Field Club, Twin Hills, uh, Long Meadow Country Club, there's, there's a lot of outdoor dining, larger sizes. I think I'll trust you and the Safety Committee to come together on what's appropriate for the area. Um, Richard, do you have any, uh, comments on Lynn's question?
No, I, I agree one hundred percent what you said. Uh, these, these events are gonna be unfolding as we move into phase two. And I'm gonna place her, um, place the authority to make these decisions in the best judgment of our town manager.
Uh, Mark Gold?
I, I don't have any other comments or questions. I guess my only concern is that since this is being done under the authority of the Select Board, I'd like to request the amendment that says that, uh, that any, any outdoor dining, a grant, granted for, uh, dining facilities in Long Meadow would be communicated to the, to the Select Board within forty-eight hours of that permission being granted, so that we know what's being done in our, in our name and our, our behalf.
Well, I think that could be something we could just ask Lynn rather than to have a formal vote, an amendment on something like that. Just ask her, I would say, just as soon as you grant something, could you let us know? Uh, so you've asked for, you've asked for an amendment. Uh, Richard, how do you feel? Do you want to amend your vote, your motion?
Uh, I'm, it's not up to me to amend the motion. If, if there's an amendment being placed, it's up to the amender.
Okay, is there a second to Mark Gold's amendment? Okay, alright, um, the, Tom, did you have a question for Lynn that, or answer, she asked a question on that?
Yeah, well, I just, I guess I'd have to adjust my view because I wasn't thinking about the, the, the space that the tables would need to be, you know, six feet apart and so forth. So, you know, just, I would think that if you look at a place that already has tables outside and it should be comparable. You know, that we don't have one place that's a lot larger than someplace else and, um, but I'm sure she'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Mark Strange, did you have an answer for Lynn?
Um, just, you know, parking, um, is, is the biggest concern. So you have a certain amount of spots that you need to operate a business, whether it be a retailer, restaurant. Um, if we're considering, you know, in the early part of phase two, um, obviously, uh, outdoor dining is allowed. But as we move towards phase three, I think their governor plans on allowing some indoor dining. Um, I think, you know, my suggestion would be to look at the capacity of both the outdoor and the indoor facilities and make sure that there's enough parking. I don't know what the, what the regulations are, the, the violars are, um, just to make sure. Because particularly in the shops, as everybody knows, it's very tight in there already. Um, so we just want to make sure that, um, we didn't, we weren't short on parking.
Thank you. Alright.
Marie, I, Marie, I have one question, please.
Sure.
I'd like to go back to Mark Gold's, uh, uh, amendment. Uh, Mark, were you requesting notification of the Select Board of granting of special permits within forty-eight hours?
Yes, that's what I was requesting.
Okay, I think that's reasonable, Marie. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I'm looking for a, um, roll call vote, Debbie, on the amendment.
Marie?
Uh, no.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Okay, now I'm looking for a roll call vote on the main motion.
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Lynn, if you could just keep us informed about what your process is, who comes up. Um, also, um, who you, you know, you've decided not to go forward with. Uh, we would appreciate that information as soon as you have that.
Yeah, Marie, can I make, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, we have just voted that the town manager is under no obligation whatsoever to inform the board of any decision being made in her office concerning these openings.
No, we voted that she would be required within forty-eight hours that she must report to us, which I felt-
Okay. So what is it, sixty-two hours, a hundred and twenty hours? I mean, uh, you, you're coming back and saying she shall inform us, but there's no time limit on it. I'm a little confused.
I'm asking her to inform us. I'm not telling her that she has to inform us within forty-eight hours because then it can become a matter of, well, when did you find out exactly that you were going to approve this? And it can become a point of contention when, uh, I'm sure she will inform us as soon as she has the information like she has been in the past. Now, uh, any other comments on the process? Okay, Lynn, do you want to tell us about the, the motion that, the application that's in front of us now?
Sure. Uh, so, uh, in addition to the governor's order on outdoor dining, he also, uh, made changes to the, uh, chapter one thirty-eight, temporary modifications to the extension of, uh, premise for liquor licenses to allow service of alcohol at the outdoor, uh, tables. Um, what you have in front of you tonight is a temporary extension of premise for the Meeting House. So last year, last May, almost a little over a year ago, you had an application in front of you to extend their premise. Uh, but the attorney at the time had asked that that be, um, deferred to a different meeting because they needed to go in front of the planning board. They did that in June of two thousand and nineteen and they received approval for their outdoor patio, um, but did not complete the circle at that time to come back to the Select Board to extend the premise or, um, get the outdoor dining permit from the Board of Health. So, uh, what you have in front of you tonight is, um, the temporary extension of premise under the governor's orders. This would only temporarily extend their service of alcohol to the patio until November first. Uh, and it's, under this process, they are not required to notify a butters. Um, and they also, uh, under this process have modified the, uh, hours of service. They're only looking to do this for four P M. to nine P M. Um, and again, I, I want to stress, this is temporary and they would be required to go through the full process, uh, should they wish to make this permanent, which would include notification to a butters or any church, school, synagogue, or hospital within five hundred feet. Um, uh, and that would be going forward, you know, after this, uh, emergency phase is over and the governor rescinds that order. Uh, and you do have the applicants here tonight to answer any questions that you might have, but, um, and, and I can let them speak to it. But the patio area looked to me to be, uh, exactly what they had presented to you last spring.
So Lynn, is this could be considered an extension of the liquor license? Do we actually have to have a liquor license hearing then?
Uh, this is, this is that.
Okay, so we have to open up, uh, the hearing?
This is, well, it, this is that, except it doesn't require the actual formal public hearing. There was no notice in a newspaper, there is no a butter notification, uh, because of those emergency orders from the governor.
Okay, alright, so I was wondering if I have been doing the procedure wrong. So this is just an approval of the plan?
Correct, a temporary extension of premise.
Okay, temporary extension. Um, and the applicant, would you, um, introduce yourselves and if you have anything to say in regards to the, this approval of this extension of the premise?
Yes, thank you. Jeanette Norman and Louis Misachi here before you guys. Uh, it's really, uh, you know, unfortunately, we thought the liquor license was completed, uh, when we went through the planning board and got approval. Unfortunately, uh, there was a misstep there by our attorney. Nobody caught it until, you know, we heard that, you know, we were getting the green light for our business to go back to opening in step one of phase two of the governor's orders. So we certainly have been closed for three months and would love to get back to opening our doors. You know, obviously, under these very, uh, strict health and sanitation guidelines, which we will certainly fully cooperate with. So we do ask that we could get a temporary extension, uh, to serve food and liquor on this patio until November first. Uh, we're not looking, we're not gonna come before you with a tent. We feel that our parking is very limited and restrictive and we don't feel that putting a tent out in front of our restaurant would behoove anyone, uh, for a safety and sanitation procedure. As you know, our, our patio is, was contagious to our actual location of our building. So we feel that we can really control people coming in, uh, in and out very safely. We have the six feet apart for social distancing. We also have, you know, all-on-site sanitation and handwashing controls right then and there. Uh, so we feel very comfortable that we could provide a safe environment within that designated patio premise that's existing.
Thank you. Richard, do you have a question for Jeanette or Lynn?
Uh, no, I don't, not on this issue.
Um, Mark, do you have a question for Jeanette or Lynn?
Mark Gold, no.
Mark Gold. Uh, Tom Lakusha, do you have a question for Jeanette or Lynn?
Just a comment that, uh, the, the amount of times that you plan to be serving, uh, is, makes it a lot easier for me to support this. Thank you.
Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, is there anyone for a motion to approve this, uh, extension? On the number first?
I'm moving motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to just define the motion as to, um, if we could, the motion is to approve a, a temporary extension of the premise of, of the Meeting House to conclude the patio is submitted to us several months ago. But as they now have defined it through November first in, in accordance with the phase one, phase two opening, I'm sorry, of the, of the governor for restaurants.
Thank you. And did we have a second on that motion? I don't remember.
Remember.
Second.
Okay, Mark Strange seconded. Okay. Um, any further discussion? Alright, roll call, Debbie?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much and, uh, good luck with your reopening.
Okay, thank you. And Lynn, I, I really want to say thank you very much for helping us all last week. I, I certainly appreciate your help and support and all of you folks. And if I could just say one quick thing, just respectfully ask you guys, if, if you do, our competitors come and they do want a tent that you think, you know, maybe to keep the playing field even, because the neighbors across the street, we're not going to do that. Uh, you know, because we do realize that parking is tight there for people to get in and out, you know, of the office building, the post office, et cetera. So if you could just keep that maybe in your mind, we'd certainly greatly appreciate that. It's been a tough three months.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, Richard, you said you had another question for Lynn?
Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, Lynn, I, hypothetically, uh, the, the Select Board has granted you authority to act in their behalf. And I was, I'd be interested to know from, from your perspective, what do you think's the adequate reporting requirements when you do make a decision on their behalf?
Um, so i- it's speaking in terms of this, what you just gave me, authority for the outdoor dining. Um, a- again, I'm trying to not overthink this too much. Um, we don't actually have anything in, uh, pending right now. So this may not even be necessary at all. Um, but if it is necessary, uh, I think I have a fairly good enough feel for what, um, would cause concern. Uh, but certainly anytime I would approve something, uh, on your behalf, I would let you know as soon as possible. I, I don't see that being a problem at all and I would likely share with you the exact, uh, plans that they filed.
I, I don't really see it being a problem anyway, but, but, but the board seemed to take exception to forty-eight hours. And I was wondering what you thought was a reasonable amount of time for notification when you're acting on behalf of the board?
Um, if you, if, I, I will comply with whatever timeframe you put on it, uh, but I appreciate not having that time window on it. Just in case it was fifty-two hours it took me, um, I just wouldn't want it to be an issue. Uh, I think, I would hope in this time that we've worked together that you almost find that I'm an over-communicator and not, uh, not someone that you're seeking information out after the fact. So I'm not, I guess I'm not really sure how to answer that, other than I will supply you the information as, as soon as I can.
I have no further question, Marie.
Okay. Um, any, uh, so the, moving on to the next item, I believe it's shared services. Lynn?
Yes, um, so this is a, a project that had been, um, been pursued by my predecessor and, uh, had been put off for a, a little bit while, uh, there was a transition here. And there was also a transition in East Long Meadow. After, uh, getting the lay of the land a little bit here, I started the conversation with the new town manager in East Long Meadow. And we revived the conversation on the agreement, working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and both health directors in Long Meadow and East Long Meadow. Uh, we have what we feel pretty confident is a final draft of a shared- We have what we feel pretty confident is a final draft of a shared services agreement. And I have been in front of the Board of Health twice now with it and I anticipate going in front of them again on June 11th to answer any additional questions they have in hopes that they take a vote to approve to this shared services agreement. I cannot present it to you formally for a vote until the Board of Health approves it. So I did share a draft with you. I think you also have the organizational chart that would be proposed, the complaint tracking chart that would be proposed and what am I missing, and the actual agreement itself. So this is just an initial conversation. Should the Board of Health approve this on Thursday, June 11th, I would present it to you formally on the 15th for a vote.
So if you have any questions for Lynn or Beverly or concerns, if you could try to get your questions to her so she can get them answered before the 15th or even maybe something you want to just ask the Board of Health on the 11th. So since it is such a complicated document, I think we want to be able to give you a little extra time to consider it and get your questions out.
Thank you. And I, can I just add a couple more things I just thought of? One is some of the rationale for the timeframe of this. We started this, well, it started well before me, but then some of the reason why we picked it back up was the Department of Public Health, even prior to the pandemic, had been really making of, an incentive push for communities to begin shared services exploration. And in doing so, they made grant funding available that was not available to other communities because of our shared conversation. So we are currently the benefit, benefiting from a shared services grant right now that East Long Meadow is the lead of, that helps allow us to pursue it. We were supposed to be using it to split time between both communities on a sharing of the public health nurse and the inspector. So they were going to loan us their inspector for three hours a week. We were going to loan them our public health nurse three hours a week. And this was going to free up Beverly's time, three hours a week, so she could write down the regulations that have been passed over all the years, write down her standard operating procedures and really give us a good guidebook for a transition. That all got put aside when we started addressing the pandemic and we've been kind of limping along a little bit in that regard, but helping each other where we can, just informally, nothing, nothing formal at this point. But when the pandemic hit, DPH did release additional grant funding to assist communities in responding and purchasing PPE or any sort of reason you needed for COVID-19. We, Long Meadow, were fortunate to receive substantially more than our area communities because of that shared agreement. Or even just the work towards the shared agreement. So between East Long Meadow and Long Meadow, we have received $50,000 in COVID-19 assistance. The surrounding communities that are working through PVPC receives $6,000. So I think we're already seeing that this is the push from the state and I think it's only going to become a stronger push once we're out of this pandemic. And lastly, the, this may seem like a really odd time to try to pursue this, but in reality, if we, if this gets approved, we would launch this softly July 1st. It would allow a six-month transition between Beverly and Amy, the health director in East Long Meadow. And then as of January 1st, we would become a full shared services district. Beverly retires and Amy assumes the role of the health director of the partnership. So the benefit about doing this now is, is we would have that six-month transition time.
So this is not really for deliberation tonight, but if you do have a question for Lynn, I'll go through. Richard, did you have any questions for Lynn?
No.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I had a bunch of questions. I emailed them to Lynn last night and, and I guess for today though, and I'm not going to necessarily go through them. But my concern, I guess, Lynn, is that, you know, this looks like it's coming to us either approve it as it is or, or, or vote against it. And, you know, there are a few things in there I, I thought were missing or I'd like to see added. And so the question is, how do we get any comments about, we think things are, are missing? And I'll just use this as one example. You know, section 5.2 says the appointment of the health director is subject to review by the Town of Long Meadow. But if that person's really working for us, I'd like to see, you know, a requirement that, that you or somebody that you designate be on a, you know, any hiring committee or selection committee as opposed to Long Meadow, East Long Meadow hired somebody and now you're just going to get to review it, which does us no good if this is a department head. So if there, if there are fundamental changes, and there are a couple of other things, but I won't get into them. There are fundamental changes that we think, you know, in order to vote for this, we'd like to get into this, get into this agreement. Is it too late to do that now? So it's either vote, vote this up or down the way it is and, you know?
No, I don't, I don't think it's too late. I would appreciate any and all questions or comments or concerns in advance so that I can vet them. And, you know, certain, some of them will need town council review. Some of them certainly would need agreement with East Long Meadow if they were comfortable putting it in the agreement. So is, thank you, Mark, for sending those. I, I looked at a few of them. I haven't made it all the way through the list yet. But I do intend to, you know, fully review them and certainly ask, you know, the one you raised about the the department heads is a great example because the charter does have a language in there about the select board approving department heads. So I need to certainly figure out how that fits into the equation. The other piece of this that I need to figure out too is that those employees then become East Long Meadow employees. And so I don't know if that then means you wouldn't approve the department head because they're not a department head of the Town of Long Meadow. So those are, I, I appreciate having some advance notice so I can really research those answers. One other possibility, and I'm going to throw this out there to see if there's any interest here, but Long Meadow could be the lead on this if we wanted to, which would mean we would, you know, flip the, flip the tables a little bit and we could be the lead agency and those employees could then be Town of Long Meadow employees. And it would just kind of flip the dynamic of this. If that was of more interest to the select board, I could consider that as well.
Okay, so.
Can I just respond quickly or?
Well, I think that the, I think, as you said, Mark, it's not appropriate to really be deliberating this on a short-term special meeting. It really should be a regular meeting. But I think what you did was important to get your concerns. You could talk to her offline about some of these issues. But I think we have to deliberate on a regular meeting in regards to the shared.
This isn't a deliberation question, Marie, it's a process question. My process question is, is, so therefore, is, you know, is, is June 15th still appropriate if we, if the document itself need, may need changes and may need to go through our town council in East Long Meadow and their town council? And, and is there a, I understand the desire to get this in place July 1st, the new fiscal year, but the fact that Beverly's still here, if this thing dragged on an extra two or three weeks, I don't think the world ends, does it?
Well, I don't know if we really need to go that far. We can find out on June 15th if we're unable to complete the process, but I hate to say we're not going to make it happen before we even start the work.
No, but it's not make it happen. It's, but Marie, we can't consider changing the document within the next week, I don't think, given the fact that the number of revisions it's, you know, reviews it's going to take. And I think it's just a practical matter to say, we're going to vote on this on June 15th. And, and on one hand, then on the other hand, saying, but if we need to, we'll change the document. They're, they're inconsistent with one another, in my opinion.
Well, I think we should do what we can on the 15th. If the board as a whole decides that this document is unacceptable and they need more revengeings, then, you know, she will go back and work on it. But I think that's why it's really important for everyone to express their concerns. She can go through them and then she will present what she feel is, after listening to the board's further questions, what is the, what she feels is the best agreement and why. If we reject that agreement and we tell her we want new, that would be something she would hear on the 15th. But right now, if we don't give her what our concerns are, she cannot respond to them and she might be making changes and renegotiating aspects of it before Monday. There's no rush to get it done Monday, but I hate to say we can't do it if it's still possible. Because this is something, in all fairness, we have seen numerous times on this board. This document is not the first time it's been handed to us. It's been handed, Stephen showed it to us. We know it's been floating out there. So let's just see what we can do next Monday. Again, it's my last meeting. It might not happen and then the next chair will have to pick up the, the issue. But it is, I think it is timely that we do make an effort to, to try to get this done in the next few weeks. Mark Strange, do you have any questions on the process?
Not tonight.
Okay, Tom?
Well, the only thing that jumped out on me was the addition of new members to the agreement, if other towns wanted to join in. And I think that I, you know, my first reaction is that we probably should have the thing run for about a year before we even consider having anyone else, anyone else jump in on it. Because, you know, you have that six months and then the next six months to get things in order so that it runs effectively for both towns. But, you know, we'll talk more on the 15th. Thank you.
Richard, I didn't know if I asked you, did you have any questions for Lynn on this?
No, I don't have any comments, Marie.
Okay, all right, so everyone, please review it, send everything you might have. I hate on Monday for us to come to it and you, and all of a sudden a new question comes up, well, what are we going to do about this? Give her some time to really get those answers. And then Lynn, see what you can do in the way of a final negotiations to do, present a document that would be passable, of course, to the Board of Health on Thursday as well as to us. And that's why don't wait till Friday to get those to her. As soon as possible, review it and let her know. Is there anything else you want to talk about tonight, Lynn?
Um. Sort of, but I don't have it on the agenda, just about reopening plans.
Well, that could be a town manager's report. So you have a short town manager's report?
Um. Slightly, I, you know, we're certainly re, reviewing all of the revising, sorry. We're reviewing all of the governor's orders on reopening and what that looks like. I've had some initial conversations with all of you about town offices and some considerations. We, I expect to have a formal plan to you, just so that you're aware of it for June 15th at that meeting. But my goal is to try to open up some sort of customer service area for July 1st that the public could walk in, not to town hall, likely to the community house, but I will formalize those plans and, and provide them to you at the, on the meeting on the 15th. And then also, we're reviewing all the guidance that was released last week about camps and daycares and pools. And we have been talking with our colleagues in all the communities around us and figuring out what they're doing. I will tell you that the guidelines that were released are going to make it incredibly difficult for camps to run or daycare to reopen at this current moment and, and pools. And some of that is related to the reduction in the capacity that we're allowed to have at these locations and whether it makes it financially impossible to run any of those programs. It's something we're still reviewing. I've been speaking with the director of Parks and Recreation multiple times a day and we're getting feedback from other communities. So I know I've had some initial conversations with you individually, but that is something we're mulling over right now. But it, it is entirely likely that we will not offer camps or open the daycare any, soon. And, and we may not open pools.
All right, any questions on the town manager's report, Richard? No. Mark Gold?
No questions.
Mark Strange?
No.
Tom Lakusha?
No.
Okay, I realized I forgot to do select board comments. Does anyone have a select board comment? And we didn't get any residents calling in, did we, Lynn?
No.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Marie?
Yes.
Richard? Richard?
He's not.
Yeah.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much and we'll be starting the forum. And don't forget, we have a regional select board meeting on Wednesday, if any of you can attend. And then the last regular select board meeting for me will be the 15th. All right, see you then. Good night.